There's a couple here. Little things. How many times have you done this? What do you think of the dashboard?
This is how it was at J. D. Just give it a brush and go. Yeah, you did the same thing, so. Everybody on the side is on the same page, so they know what's going on here.
This is a fresh crown. Would you like to try a fresh crown?
Absolutely. Ooh, they're nice and cold.
I got the New York chip in our batch. And there's like a hot tree and tarts and we took the sugar. These were left over, so we're still. After the shaker. So here, just want to hold her dates. I told Peggy I work today.
Good morning.
Yes, sir. I can't remember what your dates were.
We have to post in the paper a base preliminary budget by date. And we can always go back and be so full of that. I'm actually have been.
I don't already approve one.
Yeah.
We have to, we have to post the person on the new year. And we will, yeah, what we have this morning.
As long as that was proofed and matched.
If you want, if you also have that in mind. Really?
I was just kind of like. Welcome.
Yeah. Missed him on, and that's she had was after. His is right, his is right. That's right there. Mr. Quinter, very happy to see you this morning. God, we're here early.
We've been waiting for you, Mary. Heavenly Father, we have those who still in the prayers that will give us the right to provide good service and sound services for all of us as citizens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, one housekeeping note. We have video in order today, so which will be posted on the web. If that's what you want out there, go ahead and say it. Okay, approval of the minutes for the August fourteenth regular session. Move by Carter, second by Van, and fourth by me, corrections, discussion. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Van.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, S five oh. Now the August twenty first, special session meeting. Move by jury.
Second.
Second by Carter, corrections discussion. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Van.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, S five oh. Period of public comment, for the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So no desire for public comment, we'll close the public comment period. Announcement of closed session, we have not had closed session yet today. It will be held until eleven o'clock or whenever we get to it, and we will announce after that. Now five staff reports. Three minutes per department for staff reports, time of call for staff to take the board on items.
I'll make a quick summary board. Just really quickly, I've been working on the power supply line, pushing my back today at the time. And I stayed with me at ten, about a quarter to nine, and then I got it cut in half. So hopefully I can still look at mine. It doesn't file it, but go down to maybe only hundreds of them, but for the single. Just one that I did.
Thank you. Well. Can you understand? Okay. I have supervisors' reports. Supervisor Marshall.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Nothing very significant, so we've been meeting fairly regularly. So I did make, give a presentation at the Farm Bureau last night regarding the expansion of the proposed expansion, I'm sorry, of the mushroom facility that we've been working on. So that was not a mixed comment. But actually, the Farm Bureau meetings as a whole was very interesting. There's a member of the FBI gave a report or presentation on agri-terrorism, terrorism. Very interesting. I would encourage those that are interested to attend those meetings. It's worthwhile, too.
I attended the Farm Bureau meeting last night, and the report by the FBI director, third FBI especially, was very interesting, potential ag threats. And I'm glad Mark did a presentation on the mushroom facility for some issues.
I also went to the Farm Bureau, and Shane Maxey also was there, who talked about the oil problem in our town, which I think was well received as well. Also, I attended the first kickoff meeting of the regional plan for the flood control, the flood plan for our region, which is an insect infested valley, which kind of touches your local ground line, goes all the way up, touches the fifty. And we've got a number of diverse groups all in this circle, the steering committee. So Superintendent Gallagher, Senator, and I are leading that charge along Lewis Bear from part of the way back to Autumn from the fifteen hundred, the rural center side. So any more?
Last Tuesday, I attended the Mississippi County Boarding Meeting in the city. We covered, overlooked the one stops in the Sioux State, where inclusive towns, pretty uneventful. And then I attended the kills, the colony project, there were about four hundred people. They were really good for city, a lot of people came on the last Sunday.
Then I attended a day brack meeting, the Resource Advisory Council, presented on Monday. Monday, it blows. Got twenty something thousand dollars for close county to spend on projects. Had two projects come forward, they kept it running, just to see if there's any more. Then went to Sacramento and met with the regional forester on Wednesday. Had some discussions with regards to the fires. He was having the chief out that afternoon with a fire chip fire. I don't remember the connection with the fire, so I don't know if that was a bad one.
You know, that's interesting, you should mention that, because this weekend on Williams, there was a busload of suspension guard people on the crew. And they said it's a fire, so.
I mean, I've seen them with the on fire that I heard they were taking over, running with walking on president.
Well, I give a kind of insight, you might, and I also left out the Maricopa meeting last week as well. And that topic came up, and yes, they are. They, there is, through the Emergency Services Act, they've enforced that issue. And considering what's been happening at Almar, Forest Services unwillingness, actually coming to put out fires, and they're letting it burn, obviously, that they are running rush shot with out here. And there's an emergency services act, there has been a couple generations made. So that National Guard can't come into it over and actually start fighting fires instead of going along with national policy now, just letting everything burn.
I don't know, the National Guard knows anything about fighting fires, but. Management's very different.
Forest Services isn't even sending firefighters out there, there's somebody on Forest.
Right. Okay, nine, ten item. Personnel. Item A. County clerk, central services, consider authorizing an extra help clerical position, temporary part-time, effective September one point twelve.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Currently, the board has approved two extra help clerical positions for a county clerk line. One position has been fired, and they let two flip that into an account. They can't put two position so that one position can cover the entire simple service function while they do possible restructuring and cover for an appropriate absence of one employee.
November. Move by Martha, second by jury, any questions? Roll call.
Supervisor and jury.
Carter.
Aye.
Van.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, S five oh. Item B, district attorney, consider filling the vacancy of P.A. investigator permanent full-time, effective October one point twelve.
In this scenario, the incumbent has tendered a resignation. The employee that's currently in the role's last day will be temped. So this will be only one investigator to handle all investigations both apart.
Move by jury, seven, nine, and any discussion. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury. Carter.
Van.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, S five oh. I see the sheriff jail, consider authorizing a limited term correctional officer position effective October first, the twenty twelve through June thirty of twenty thirteen.
The department currently has a vacant correctional corporal position, and they're requesting to underfill the correctional corporal position with a limited term position of correctional officer to cover staffing for the short term. And they eventually promote a correctional officer to fill the vacant correctional corporal position.
Move by jury.
Second.
Second by Carter. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Van.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, S five oh. Behavior health services and health, consider authorizing an extra help clerical position, temporary part-time, effective September first, twenty twelve.
The department currently has several of the sub-office staff on a certain level outpieces, and they're requesting extra help to cover staff shortages.
Move by Carter. Second by jury, immediate setting. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Van.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, S five oh. Thank you.
May I please go back to the sheriff on item C and correct the date, October first, two thousand twelve, to June thirty, two thousand thirteen, please?
We did, I read that into it. Thank you. They, how about, here, how about the budgetary matters? Budgetary matters, Robert.
Well, Coach A says that you have to have at least a hundred budget posts in the payroll by April, September eight for public. Now, it's supposed to just happen, happen, and there's something in there, so depending on how you guys have a budget on, you need something limited to that, otherwise, I'll feel taken out.
We'll be together after the meeting. Okay, nine fifteen. Sheriff, consider approving your request from the Bureau of Reclamation to waive the close county ordinance number six seven, and ordinance revoking ordinance in six, or four seventy-six, four seventy-seven, and six one-nine in sections fourteen dash eight point five and fourteen dash seventeen of the county code, and substituting new section fourteen dash seventeen to the county code regarding miscellaneous offenses on East Park Reservoir property for the twenty ten, twenty eleven, and twenty twelve hunting season for the services.
What is your, your judge partner, the chairman of the county, Shane Maxey? This is a contract that we did previously, and at the request of the Bureau of Reclamation, for the purposes of a faithful corporation.
Because our ordinance is banned, virtually everything, you know, and they have to have the ability to have their. Move by that, Senator. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter.
Van.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye.
Aye, S five oh. I'm being considered accepting bids for a side-by-side utility train vehicle for the sheriff's department as part of the twenty eleven, twenty twelve off highway vehicle grant as follows. The one boost tractor company at eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars ninety-six cents, and the Omni Ag Services at fourteen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars thirty-two cents. Further award bid for same operating vehicle purchase.
Good morning.
Good morning. Move by Van, second by Martha, would accept bids. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Van.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye. S five oh. Okay.
Do you suggest a work bid to close spec or authorize sheriffs to purchase a vehicle?
Were these for the same vehicle or different?
Same vehicle.
Move by Carter. Second by jury, needs a special. We already have the trailer for this time, right?
Yes.
Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Carter.
Aye.
Van.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
All right, S five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, today the ninth, twenty item. Looked the quarter elections, consider the board's support of National Voter Registration Day Tuesday, seven hundred twenty-five, twenty twelve, and authorized the use of the courthouse grounds on that day for county registration drives to be organized and staffed by county personnel.
Morning, everybody. We had a great success on voter registration by county, font, and not hard, saying for for the June primary, and all the departments in the office that they were, including the library, public works, so they're elect a sign, public side, the trailer out there, and the sheriff's department reminding people, the last day to register to vote, and we thought great support. The office couldn't be minded on the pay stubs for all employees. And so the, the last day to register, we had promoted that day, through that, we actually got to create almost a hundred, either new or updates, changes, corrections to the, to the registration of the county, so which is really, really good. So we'd like to do this, and it's actually organized on a national level event, a national registration. And we'd like our county to participate in it and put the booth out right in front of the courthouse like we did last time. And it was very visible, people driving down, kind of, many people stopped. It wouldn't be just for counties, because whatever registrations are filled out for people that live in other places, we'd be forwarding them to the appropriate county. So we would look back to approval, I knew you would say yes, but I wanted to put it on the agenda because, just to give it a little more publicity and to give it a little. the agenda because, just to give it a little more publicity and to give it a little more of an officially sanctioned event from quite the county, so we'll be staffing it, um, we may have a couple volunteers help us as well, but, um, it, it's a one-day event, it'd be during working hours, we'll try to open a little bit earlier than working hours, but, it should be a lot of fun, and, um, so, I'm here to ask for your official approval of that.
Okay, on the board.
Okay.
Move by jury, second by Van. Did you, on your previous of the hundred, were they all Pluss County or did you register some from outside?
We had a couple that we forwarded, um, people driving through different places, I think we had a couple St. Louis and a couple Lake County, so, it was just one day and it was spur of the moment, but we tried to do something, so we did, and it, it took, within a couple weeks, I, I mentioned it at a department head meeting, and everyone came forward and said we can help in this way, so I, I know I spoke to you about that in front, told you how impressed I was with the support that we got from the department heads here, and everybody did a little something that they could do, and it was just awesome, it was really, really good.
Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter, Van, Marshall, and Evans.
Aye, S five oh, I'd be, consider accepting certification pursuant to election code section one zero five one five of the county where it's already November sixth, twenty twelve general election.
And this is just, uh, business as usual for the November general election, this just tells you at the close of the final period, uh, what offices would go to an election, what offices, we only have one that's going to be an appointment, um, for Maxwell Public Utility District, there was one seat unfilled, we contacted them, and, uh, hopefully we'll get a recommendation from them, and then, of course, uh, there are several that are going to election, uh, these are the ones that have the same number filled as were, uh, needed to be filled and won't be going to election.
Move by the board.
So.
Move by Carter. Second by Van, any special? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter, Van, Marshall, and Evans.
Aye, S five oh, item C, consider adopting a resolution for supervisors of Pluss County State of California, appointing nominees to the office of director of their respective districts and authorize the chairman to sign.
And this kind of goes along with the, your previous item, um, you cut, jumped the gun on it, usually we have to wait and get letters from the districts, but because we only have one that is unfilled, we, we only have to wait for that one, so we went ahead and appointed and have everyone else on board, except the thing is they're going to take office that first, maybe December, and we'll just come back to you of that, for the resolution, for the one appointment when it comes in.
Move by the board.
So.
Move by Carter. Second by jury. Question. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter, Van, Marshall, and Evans.
Aye, S five oh, thanks, good. Nine twenty-five, I have a district attorney, consider declaring a nine three nine nine four four, supposedly license number one three eight seven three five four as surplus and in possession of the district attorney's office to further authorize the district attorney's staff to utilize the county through list of vendors for disposal and sale of said vehicle.
This the one across the street?
It, in the police station.
I believe that we get rid of that. Second.
Move by Martha, second by jury, any discussion? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury. Carter, Van, Marshall, and Evans.
Aye, S five oh, thank you.
Thanks for presentation, Dave.
Deal.
Alex is the best.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Do, uh, do you, planes?
You guys have a seat, yes, there were a couple of fixed asset purchases, I guess I would focus on Cal cards and gift cards. Can you maybe? And I guess we just need to make sure that our policy, that our policy is followed, and I, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, it's, it's, I'm not sure. We utilize, um, gift cards and it was back that my staff at the morning, six weeks, their Cal cards, they went to the training, so I purchased the gift cards and there was receipts for the gift cards, so they matched them with the gift cards, there, there weren't just gift cards, there were not, and they were, so they would purchase on behalf of children and children.
So what's the difference between, between that, yeah?
Well, because my staff did purchase, and they did take the kids out, there's a couple of more congratulations, um, and one was actually assisting a family, um, for self-sustaining, in their home, and provided, um, definitely the products that we have, that's why we recommended, but then, everything is going to count as far as, um, gift cards, the receipt for the purchase of gift cards and the receipt for what is purchased on the.
So can we purchase gift cards on the Cal card then? That's where I'm getting confused.
Well, no, well, I was, I was told this subsequently, so, this, I mean, this is, Peggy sent me an email on, I believe it was Thursday, I'm sorry, so, but I agree, our agency did provide receipts for everything that was purchased to that.
Martin, of course, your staff never received the Cal card in time to do what they could have done with the Cal card.
Exactly, exactly.
So that's a little pick up there.
But they, would they have been buying the gift certificate or would they have been?
They have been purchasing, purchasing directly, yes.
For the.
Yes.
Right.
But we did that, I go shopping with the, with the families, because I was the only one with a card. But I think it's been resolved, my understanding is the staff, um, were notified last week, the names, we got their Cal cards, yeah.
How long ago did they have it, Karen?
It was in June. Yeah, it was June twenty-seventh.
The recent one started?
Mm-hmm.
And Peggy requested the Cal cards, pull those through the hole, and you gotta, you remember the day, we always say, so if you see a message call.
Where do they come from? Like, Minnesota or?
Minnesota, or where did you?
Tennessee?
Probably love line application.
But it shouldn't be any future occurrences of this.
Okay.
And then the policy for in-luches or out, incoming luches or outgoing luches, is that the third part of every bill?
Well, I hope so, and I just saw a issue, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know whether it's a calculation, but I can't take it over for, um, I think it's, it's, you know, too long, or, or too. Fixed assets, of course, we, we tell departments not purchasing fixed assets because there's a government fee, and a lot of times what happens is I'll purchase some, like, the Alex's things, and I'll say, number is a fixed asset.
It's like twenty-three dollars, it wasn't twenty-three dollar fixed asset.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, that policy has to be updated because it does say the policy that has to be either at least five hundred and four, that's another three years, so when it falls under the three-year thing, it has to be fixed asset, I don't know what choice.
It's a very three years?
Yeah, it's a, like, state, you know, you buy a stapler.
And that, okay, so there's a, I was saying, we have, we have.
That's why some of these, it's not.
Fixed asset policy is very evident.
Would that, why didn't the policy creation probably, you know, the fact that the budget can start changing, fixing clean up.
Any questions? Do specials first?
Was that almost done?
Oh, she's still asleep.
Roll call.
Second, taking discussion.
Second by Van. Questions?
Let's just.
Any questions, comment, please? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury. Carter, Van, Marshall, and Evans.
Aye, S five oh, regulars? Move by Carter.
Second.
Second by Marshall. Question, roll. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury. Carter, Van, Marshall, and Evans.
Aye, S four oh one. Nine thirty item, probation, consider approving a commercial lease agreement between the county and the county's department and Sierra City Management Company Incorporated, where rental is properly located at three twenty fifth Street, Suite A, Los Angeles, September one, twenty twelve, through August thirty-one, twenty fifteen, with terms and conditions of support, and authorized to keep probation off, if you're just signing, we now, for super, good morning.
Good morning, Sierra, for members. Um, this item is for leasing space for a day reporting center for the AB one oh nine and SB six seventy-eight, adult probationers, uh, we want to enter into a, a joint adventure with, uh, our partners, Behavior Healthcare, uh, healthcare services, education, and one-stop, to have a one-stop shop for these folks to come, get services in a non-threatening atmosphere. Uh, many counties around here are doing this, if you'll recall back when the original CCP, Community Corrections Partnership in two thousand and eleven, on the realignment plan, the board approved the, uh, realignment plan when Chief Ordin was here, in that realignment plan, page six, I have copies if you'd like, it talked about moving forward to the day reporting center, we are in a position now to go in and do that so that as the, um, ones that come straight to probation, the post release pieces for legal folks, and/or the ones that come out of the jail, will go to this and get services, whether it be domestic violence, anger management, uh, trying to get a job, counseling services, whatever, in hopes that we can reduce recidivism and keep them from going back into jail, which will be a big cost savings.
What's that?
Blessure.
Is the current situation, are you participating, um, in this, since you're looking for job training, um, with the one stop?
Yes, yes. Laura's, yeah, Laura's is going to be, it's fatal.
What was the total, um, budget allocation from the state for us for one oh nine?
One oh nine was four hundred and thirty-two thousand, I had fifty-nine dollars, and SB six seventy-eight was two hundred and twenty-one thousand and six sixty-two, so combined at about six hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven twenty-one, I believe.
Does the CCP have a, a budget set out?
We have a budget that we approved, and it's in, uh, the new plan, awaiting for your board's approval for, uh, this, uh, this review, and, and this is in, in that plan.
In that plan, okay, and since we haven't, would you like just forwarding that, so to me, um, just the CCP budget?
Exactly.
For our, our Sierra supporters?
Mr. Fenton, I had a discussion about this issue yesterday, and I had concerns over yet the county, uh, bringing yet another space when we have so many collaborative departments working on this, why these people couldn't report to the probation office, to the office education, someplace other than running a new space, Mr. Fenton, would you elaborate on that, please?
Basically, I don't, at least probation, we don't have any group to run groups, this would be an all-day, ongoing, and after-hours, uh, space for running groups and individual counseling for these folks, and again, the whole idea is, my understanding is, most of the departments that we're collaborating with are pretty tight to, to be able to have those groups ongoing where these folks will come in, drop into a non-threatening environment, i.e. not going through head-on detectors or that type of thing, and, and being able to work with them individually and/or in group sessions, so, we felt, and that was the CCP felt, uh, that this would be the best environment, again, it's working in other counties, Beuth has it going right now, uh, Nevada has it going right now, Napa has it going, uh, Tama is putting one up as we speak, and we're trying to move forward in that same model, because if they are working, Rochelle has one for, has actually had one before, AB one oh nine was passed through SB seven eighty, and it's working very well because of the folks are coming in, where they don't feel they're just going to get arrested if they mess up or anything like that by probation and taking it to custody, so, space-wise, I haven't been able to find anything that would work as well, we looked at several options throughout the county, and this was the best and, and, and the most reasonable for seven hundred a month.
I mean, I don't want to show my right neck too bad here, but, but the answer to me is, don't mess up, and if you mess up, you should get arrested, and given them a huggy-feely place that, that is non-threatening, are we opening ourselves up to those guys walking in with guns and knives and, and if you're going to be back and forth saying, well, I need a bulletproof window for them to check into and?
No, no, the whole idea really is, and if it's in line with realignment, whether we all agree with realignment or don't agree, whether that's another story, but the idea is, is to try and get them to rehabilitate, to keep them out of jail, which will cost us a lot more, especially with our own jail, and also minimize our, our litigation, I mean, the whole reason the state got really into realignment, in my thinking at least, is because they had somebody lost it, so I want to try to help work with the sheriff to keep those folks from out of jail, if we can keep them out of jail, it will minimize any kind of litigation will come to the county, which these folks are notoriously litigation-oriented, and also, if we can keep them getting domestic violence treatment, we can get them drug out, all treatment through the partners, then I think, and we can help get them jobs, hopefully we can keep them out, whatever that percentage is, we've done a better job so far, to date, it's not great, and, and we're still learning, if you will, ways to deal with the post release community supervision folks and the eleven seventy agents that come out of jail, which we just had a couple, but, it, it's better than just putting them back out on the street and having no services for them, which right now, we're doing kind of patchwork, if you will, this will kind of solidify and bring it all together.
Don't misunderstand, I'm not opposed to giving them services and helping them succeed in, 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 in environments that the rest of us live in, I am opposed of not making them accountable, and if they think they're not being made accountable because they go to a separate place where they're not going to be made accountable, I am opposed to that.
Well, that's why we get a probation officer that will be there to help keep them accountable, along with, uh, a, a social worker, a therapist, uh, somebody to do education from Case Bridgen Shop, and, uh, somebody from, to help them with the vocational fees from one-stop, so, I mean, the idea is to keep them accountable, to have, where they go one place, rather than having to go to my shop, go over to, uh, there, if they need Medicare, turn it on, go over to his place to get there, because he's looked in, and not always go to the next place, if you can get them in one place and get everything done, I think you've got a better chance of working with them, and that model has worked in other counties, so.
Okay, so, so, you help me understand here, we're going to have to hire people to have somebody from Elizabeth's office there, somebody from your office there, somebody from Case Bridgen's office there, somebody from Bill Carmelius's office there, because we don't want them to go to the different offices, is that what you're saying?
I think, as I understand it, my partners, is they're doing it with people they already have in-house, or that are paid for out of other grants, we're doing it with what the probation assistance we currently have right now, it's just that we don't have the one place they can come to and, and run the groups and everything, so, no, we're not going to be hiring more people specifically for this.
No, I, I don't believe AB one oh nine is going to fund everything that's going to be required to survive, and this is going to be a general fund impact, and you have been here a long time, but you'll, you'll soon find that, at least I, and I can't speak to the rest of my counterparts, uh, bigger government is not necessarily what we want to see.
I mean, I can only tell you that, that this is trying to reduce the costs to the county, and I, I personally believe that if we keep them out of jail, which is extremely costly, and a litigation, that alone will help, as well as keeping the public safe by having them in groups and in therapy, try to get them from recidivacy.
Because this was left open-ended in this last discussion where we were going to actually have to deduct some of that cost because technically they were parolees that were not qualified. Or if they were, because, wait, the code was written in the state, we wrote the code, it didn't technically classify them as parolees, therefore they did not.